This is the hardest part of the meeting.
Go down back to the session. And hit record, got it. There then record, it's the left a little bit, couple. Record the clap.
I'd like to call to order the June 20th Lacey Planning Commission meeting. I'm looking for a motion for approval of the agenda and consent items.
So moved?
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Carries? Um, public comments, are they stacked up in the queue there, Brian?
That's a little different queue than I'm used to.
Was that Kathy?
Nope, I don't see Kathy. Anyway, we do have, uh, audience members as attendees, if you'd like to make comments to the planning commission, this is the opportunity to be able to do that. Uh, if you want to use the raise hand function, we can go ahead and bring you in.
I think Rolf has no comment.
Going once, going twice?
Rolf always has a comment.
Alright, no public comment tonight.
Alright, we will move on. Uh, commission member reports.
Daphne? I have nothing. Mark?
Yeah, I wanted to give an update, I've talked about it before, I'm, I'm part of the Patterson Lake Association and we've recently, uh, passed a, a vote to create a lake management district. Hicks Lake has a lake management district within the city of Lacey, um, since we're in Thurston County, it's, we applied through Thurston County and Long Lake is through Thurston County, those three lakes are connected. Part of the Tri-Lakes region, but anyway, what, what's interesting is that the lake management district is moving forward. But we had one, um, member on the lake, a, a lakefront resident, who went through the county to try to get, find out who cast ballots in the election and how they voted. Which doesn't strike anyone as being kind of a normal thing, right? I mean, your secret ballot, you should expect secrecy, but there was written somehow in the Thurston County law that, uh, it was a different kind of an election, and so it was open to, uh, inspection of ballots. And we, we went to court over it, hired an attorney over it, but anyway, the, the judgment came down a week or two ago that the, that the, um, judge ruled in favor of the county. And so, any county now that's voting in a similar type of an election for a lake management district or whatever, you know, they've never, they never told us in advance that our ballots could be inspected, but they can be. Anyway, I want to give that, you know, I talked about a little bit, Ryan, a couple of weeks ago, but, um, anyway, that's an update, but the lake management district is moving forward and just to kind of give you a brief idea of what that is, they tax each resident on the lake about $500 a, a year, and that's added into your property tax, and then that money is bundled together to treat the lake, to hopefully avoid things like the blue-green algae bloom that we, we hear about so much.
Alright, nothing for me. We will move on to department reports.
Grant?
Grant?
Do you wanna?
Grant at his usual location.
Yep. Uh, on the farm. No, Brian, go ahead.
Alright, a couple of things that, um, I wanted to mention, first of all, um, on Thursday, this Thursday, um, there'll be a, a joint meeting between the City Council and the Thurston County Board of Commissioners, uh, so that meeting's at six o'clock uh, over at the atrium building on Pacific Avenue, if anybody is interested in attending. We will have, uh, a couple of agenda items of interest that night, uh, one of which will be an update on, uh, the joint plan. So I think, as you're aware, um, we've been working in earnest to try to get the joint plan updated, um, and so there'll be some information sharing on that. Uh, another will be an update on the Martin Way Corridor study, um, and I think the planning commission's received a briefing on that. Uh, there's still information being developed by Thurston Regional Planning Council on that, and they'll, they'll be giving an update. Um, you can expect that that'll still be coming back to the planning commission at, at some point as well. And then, uh, finally, in a, kind of a discussion about the, uh, urban growth area permitting issue. So I think we've, we've talked also before about potential, um, you know, the, the potential likelihood or, or not of, of the city taking over permitting responsibilities in the urban growth area, uh, specific, specifically regarding concerns over the Martin Way Corridor. So those discussions will be, will be going forward as well.
What time was that?
Six o'clock, six o'clock, the atrium building there on Pacific Avenue. Um, as well, we have a, another update on Maple Court. So Maple Court is the former Days Inn that'll, um, house, uh, homeless individuals that are currently living in the, the state DOT right-of-way. Uh, that facility is getting closer to opening, um, at this point, uh, we expect that the uh, first occupants will be, be transferred there and, and occupying the building, um, on or around, uh, June 26th, so that's, that's Monday. Uh, so good news there, so there were some hiccups that they were having along the way that were delaying opening. Originally, the opening date was supposed to be yesterday, uh, they had some, um, sprinkler system issues that were, like, were resolved, um, they had a difficult, difficulty in getting their sprinkler contractor in, um, but it looks like that work's gonna be done this week and be ready for inspection by the end of the week, which will-
Is that still in the groups of ten, was it?
Uh, ten per week.
Ten per week?
Is the goal, yeah, that, that, they're gonna need to kind of see how it goes and what's needed, it's gonna be a work in progress for a bit. And I'm sorry, Ryan, I don't mean to, um, interrupt, but the inspections on the 26th, that they plan on starting to place people there on the 28th.
Okay.
And, and the camp at Slater Kenny will be the, the primary, um, focus at this point.
Who manages that facility?
It's the Low Income Housing Institute, um, they're out of Seattle, so they have the, the contract to, to support that, so that'll be a, a, yeah, uh, known as LEHI, that, they'll, it'll be staffed 24/7, so, um, you know, they'll, they'll have a, a, a large staff commitment there. Um, so they, they also operate a facility in, um, South Tacoma, a former Comfort Inn, I want to say, that's, um, on Hosmer Street, as a similar style facility.
And do they do the Olympia one? The original club?
I'm not sure about their commitments in Olympia, I can't speak to that. Grant, do you know?
Um, not offhand, I think, uh, they, they do manage the, the, uh-
Unity Commons?
The, uh, transitional housing part of it, not the enhanced shelter part.
Yeah.
They anticipate will be issues moving in, what are typically the ones that require like that staged move in?
Well, it's more about just the, the logistical issue of transferring people and getting them from the right-of-way and, and, you know, taking care of their belongings and all that kind of stuff, and, and, you know, it's more than, more of the logistical issues associated with that, plus the intake and, and those kinds of things that need to be done at Maple Court. If we just did that all at one time, or if they did that all at one time, it would be kind of a logistical nightmare, so they're, they're, you know, phasing that in to make it more manageable, and I think about ten per week is kind of their goal.
And the, this, the state's, uh, mobile outreach team is working with OLEMAP right now to, um, identify, uh, tag the tents and who, who's living in each tent, starting to just kind of, um, get a better feel for who's where, who's on the list, and, and who's where, where the best housing option is for them as they start opening up facilities. And, uh, that also, part of that is starting to control access to the camp, so, so they can kind of manage, uh, very efficiently the, uh, the move into, uh, Maple Court.
I, I did notice today, I was by there today, they're starting to place like boulders and other things on the top of the hill adjacent to the Hobby Lobby site there to, um, kind of keep the camp from expanding, so they're starting on the, I guess that's the east side, and, and placing big boulders and other objects to keep people from being able to occupy that space.
I believe it was in Idaho, court ruling that said you can't move people off of public property unless you've got enough space, right? Where will we stand in that when, once this is completely open?
Uh, we still won't have enough space, so just blow.
Yeah, there, there's a couple of projects in, in the queue. Maple Court is one of them, which is about 120 beds, uh, but, uh, Olympia's, uh, making good progress on the Franz Anderson Tiny Hut Village, and I'm not offhand sure how many that takes, but-
Fifty.
Fifty, okay, so, so there's a couple of things coming online. And of course, not everybody is, is gonna accept the housing as, as well, that's part of the process to, to get them moved in is to figure out where, where the best spot is for them, or if they want, uh, to avail themselves of housing.
So, Mark, back to your point, I, I think, you know, the thing is, we still won't have, we'll have a net deficit of shelter space once, um, everybody, you know, has offered housing, so, um, you know, that, we'll still be dealing with those Boise Martin decisions.
There was a news article, national news, um, story the other week or so ago in San Diego, that the, that the council voted that, that, um, they can move, um, people off of public property because they had enough housing available to them, and those that chose not, uh, didn't want to move into housing would still be moved off of public property. Uh, but we're, I'm sure we're a long way from being in that kind of a position to have enough places for them to move to.
I have a question.
Yep.
In a previous meeting, you updated us that the repair, uh, and preparation of this site took longer than expected because of, uh, evidence of meth labs, I think, and drug things. What's the provision under this new structure to, to prevent that from taking hold in this new setting?
So are you talking about like whether or not they can use drugs in the facility?
Or being drug tested?
So this is, this is very, very low barrier, um, so there's, uh, requirements that they, um, they can't use or, um, drink alcohol in, in public places or in public spaces within the building, uh, but there's no requirements related to, you know, use within their own, own space, so there's not any kind of like drug testing or, or those kinds of things that would go on.
That's, um, a lot of the comments I've seen on Nextdoor and other social platforms is the concern of a drug activities taking hold in the new site, so there is no provision to manage that at all, I thought that was-
No, 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 that, that's not true, the, the, they can't, you, I mean, it's their personal space, we can't go inside, but LEHI has very, a very good set of rules that you do have to follow, uh, if you're to be in their housing. And if you can't follow those rules, that they're working on mechanisms to, to get people out of the housing, so, um, and they, I, yeah, they, they've also formed a community action group that, uh, talks to the neighboring businesses, uh, anybody who's uh, really wanting to be on that, they, they, to go over, you know, the rules, the other, the other facilities that they manage and all that. The, um, you know, to, the first community action group meeting a couple of months ago now, the one in Tacoma, well, excuse me, one of our members is a manager of Starbucks, uh, three or four Starbucks in, in town, he lives next to the one up in Tacoma, and he says the, the, the criminal and nefarious activity has actually gone down significantly since it converted into an enhanced shelter with that management around it, so, that, that was uh, very important to the city of Lacey that we, um, make this succeed, and part of that is having that management, the, uh, offer of services on-site, you know, and, and basically the rules that, that society has to follow.
Thank you. Good to know there's positive precedent with this management company.
Yep.
Does each person have their own room, or would there be, so, it would be an individual person to each, unless maybe it's a couple or-
Correct, yep, yep, exactly.
And they're responsible for their own, kind of housekeeping and-
Yep, and there's rules and regulations on, you know, making sure they're laundering their, um, their bedding and that they have to, you know, clean their restroom and their, you know, it's, their rooms are subject to inspections periodically and those kinds of things.
No children, right? No children at the site?
Correct, no children. No visitors, so they're not allowed to have visitors, right?
Thank you.
Sure. Uh, and the last thing I was gonna mention was, we're having a, a climate, uh, retreat on Saturday, so that is a, a meeting of, uh, various regional partners, um, to, to discuss and, and formulate, um, kind of a, a regional approach to climate initiatives through the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, uh, that's a, a basically a, you know, group of various stakeholders, uh, including, you know, local governments, but also other, you know, uh, interested parties that would want to be involved in the, the climate mitigation issues are gonna come to, come to Lacey, so we're gonna host that workshop on Saturday, uh, to, to kind of look at what some potential implementation measures will be at a regional level and, and discuss and refine that further. At that point, Grant, anything else?
Yep, did a good job.
So?
Okay. Here's your chance, you have a question for Brian or Grant?
Or Aaron.
Or me.
Hey, we will move on to new business, we're gonna hear about the Agenda Management System. Uh, Special Projects Administrator Kelly Adams is here to tell us about it.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commission, for making time today, I'm gonna make this quick and painless, I hope. So, I am the Special Projects Administrator in the Public Affairs Department, so I work on a lot of different projects that affect how we communicate outwardly and internally. And one thing that we've been working on with the city clerk's office for about a year is looking at how we create and publish public meeting documents and videos. And especially with the pandemic, we've changed the way that we have meetings, and we are realizing that we are not as accessible as we could be, we could be a whole lot better. And so this was a great opportunity, we mapped out our processes, we looked at available systems, and we are just about ready to roll out a new system, and so this system affects public meetings only. So a big change you're gonna see is all of our public meetings are gonna be available in one place. You're not gonna have to click on different tabs, we're gonna share information to each page, but we'll have one public meetings portal. So Erin, if you could show us the old Planning Commission page. So if we scroll up just a little bit.
Need to show the screen to make sure.
And also selfishly, if we could have a photo of the Planning Commission together, we'd love to put it on your website. So I can talk a little bit about why we're doing this. First of all, we want to continue our stellar compliance with the letter in the spirit of the Open Public Meetings Act. We want to be more accessible and we want to be more transparent, we want to make it easy for our community to get to our information, so if we scroll down a little bit, this is our current page. We have our commissioners in this table, and we have these four tabs below. And that's a lot of clicks to get to the same information. And so if you show us the next tab, if that little zoom bar will let you, let's go to the new Planning Commission page.
Oh.
You're gonna have to sneak, there we go. Alright, so if you scroll up a little bit, on the outside of that, let's go to the top of the page. It's going back in time.
Yeah, there we go.
There we go, yeah. Okay, alright, so if you scroll down a little bit and just get a bit of that. So this is just an embedded peek, this is just Planning Commission meetings. Right now, we have two years retroactive of your meetings, your agendas, your minutes, your videos, and as we move through the year, we'll be pulling from our old archives that we had that goes back all the way to 2011. So, trying to get more transparent, let's go to the next tab here, it's being feisty. There we go, next one, yep. Alright, so if you, this is really zoomed out. Is there any way to zoom out a little bit? There we go, perfect, this is the public meetings portal, and it'll be embedded in our webpage. And so what it gives you is a couple of key features that we have wanted with the website, but we really needed a new system to have. So we've got a calendar in the upper left that shows us what days meetings fall on, so you can navigate that way. You can filter by dates, you can select event categories to pick what, uh, border commission or council series you'd like to see. And this is my favorite part, can you type the word neighborhood in the search? So all of the old agendas that we have, the system reads through them, and so what it's gonna show is, it's gonna show you everywhere where the word neighborhood came up. So if there's a special issue that you want to look up, a name, you can now find it, and it's a lot easier to see.
That's pretty cool.
That's powerful, it's really cool, that is so powerful.
So can you click on today's date, June 20th, and let's open up? If you go to the upper left, that little calendar, click on there, and let's look at today's meeting and what it looks like. We might have to click that back button right there to clear those filters. Okay, scroll down one more, so yep, go ahead and click on that, and it's showing us that this meeting is live right now. And because we have joint meetings with other organizations, we have it automatically opening to the meeting files section. Um, so in meeting files, you can see there's your agenda and your agenda packet in their brand-new format, and so we have unified the look of all the agendas for public meetings, your same sections are still there with your same language. We've worked with your staff to make sure that this actually works for you. So, if you can click next to agenda, there's that little download button. When we talk about accessibility, you can download this in PDF or in plain text, and I've given you a sample there. Um, you have plain text, which is really great for accessibility devices like e-readers or other assistive technologies. And so if we click on Meeting Overview in the left, here's our itemized agenda. This is what the public can click through, and if there's any attachments, if there are any actions, like if there was a vote taken, that information will show up here, we're in a current live meeting, so it's not really gonna show us that. And I'm not gonna have you click on the meeting media, because if that plays the video, we might get a little bit of feedback, and I want to spare you from that. I'm also gonna show you, so this is what the public sees, and if they, if you click on Submit Comments, so, go ahead and click Sign In, so they'll do it. Okay, go ahead and hit the back button, I thought it was automatically signed in. A user, very minimal information, they just sign up, it's like an email subscription service, and they can submit a public comment that goes directly to the city clerk with this system, or they can share the meeting, so it's kind of a one place, you don't have to go out to your email, copy and paste a link, just share the meeting out with whoever you need to in the system. And so this, I'm gonna pass this around, this is your new boards portal. So this is just a web link that you go to and sign in, and you can see all of the agendas you have access to. You can join the meeting, if this board chooses to do electronic voting, those electronic voting instructions will pop up and say, oh, a motion's been made, you know, yay, nay, or abstain. And we're gonna have a new live display jumbo screen behind the city clerk's desk, so that the audience can follow along with where we are in the agenda, what the votes were, similar to C-SPAN when you see the yays, nays, and, and it'll tell you if that motion passes. Um- Well, every council member or commissioner, will their name be next to their vote, so people could see how it's from? Yes, yes, exactly, and it shows like a, a green bar and the names, a red bar and the names, and so it tries to communicate it a couple different ways. Well, we've been doing lots of rehearsals in here with the city clerk, running through recordings of videos, so that we're getting used to how to best train the rest of the staff, like Erin. Um, what other pieces can I tell you about? Live meeting display, the boards portal, and so, what's next? So on Friday, I'm gonna send an email to all staff, all board members, all of our elected officials, to tell you what's coming next, to give you a link so that you can go play with this before it goes live, and, um, give us any feedback. And then on June 30th, we're gonna update the website, get it up there, and start. And so we will be using this system when you have your next meeting on July 18th. You don't have to use the board portal right now, but it will be available to you, and we can do some training after July 18th, because I suspect you might need a little bit of a break. Do you have, do you have any questions?
Will we be able to monitor traffic into the site? Will you be able to see like how many clicks in certain areas and what people, what people are accessing as far as in the site?
The analytics are really focused on the data that we're putting in, so we can see, um, when you add and sign up for that free user account, you can subscribe to all the boards that you want to, so as soon as agendas pop out, it emails it to you. But, yeah, anything that's in that system, we see analytics for, but I don't know as far as like Google metrics, clicks and that sort of thing, but I will ask.
It's interesting to see if it would generate more people interested in, and if it's so much easier to navigate and stuff.
But on the website side, we do have those analytics, so we can see how many people are clicking to get to the portal.
Awesome, thanks.
Yeah.
Major, major upgrade.
Interesting, um, I was, I'm guessing I probably came in yesterday when you guys were probably doing something with this, 'cause I could not find the agenda for tonight's meeting on, on-
Website?
Uh-huh, so, and I know where to look, and I even pressed the agenda button, but there was nothing there, so I'm guessing, and all of our names weren't in there, so I'm guessing you were probably in the middle of something.
I have been doing some offline testing, so I, I appreciate your patience.
It'll be interesting, uh, if we, if we see, uh, if there's always, if somebody wanted to, they could sign up for reminders of meetings, like Rolf Boone might want to sign up, 'cause he is enthralled by the Planning Commission meetings. He'd want to get a reminder that, you know, Tuesday or every, you know, hey, don't forget, Rolf, tonight's a meeting. Don't miss that Planning Commission meeting, so, uh-
And more importantly, it will share, hey, a new agenda's been published, or-
Yeah.
Oh my goodness, we amended the agenda, here it is.
So, good, nice upgrade.
So starting with that meeting in July, July, I think you mentioned, 18th, um, you will start getting your packets that way, so right now, Erin sends you essentially like a PDF that you, you know, that gets populated on your iPad, excuse me, plus emails it to other people, uh, that have basically kind of signed up to be a, a part of that. Now, people can sign up separately, so they're, like Kelly said, that they're just notified automatically when something's uploaded, but you as well will, will also be notified that an agenda's been published, and you'll be able to go into the new system and see this, so you won't necessarily be getting an email anymore from, from city staff saying that here's your agenda packet, it'll be, we'll populate it all and then publish it, and then it'll be ready to go out to you guys, and you'll get a notification, and then you'll go in and, and log into the system, and it'll be there for you.
Will it notify us like to our personal emails or to, okay?
I would assume it's gonna be to, well, you can sign up as a member of that-
For Temple?
Yeah, um, it'll, it'll notify any member of the public that an agenda's there, so I, I think you can use your own private email for that, but in order for, you know, to access your planning commission packet, you'll need to use your city email and iPad.
Okay.
And we'll have further guidance and training, we'll send you a checklist and some screen recordings of, of where to click.
For us senior citizens, we appreciate the simplicity and the user friendliness, it looks like it's gonna be great.
And I'd just like to thank Kelly and all the hard work she's put in on it, it looks great, and I'm looking forward to uh, both rolling out the public side and also working with some of the workflows on the backend, so that we can kind of automate and, and clean up our processes, um, in preparing the packet, so, Kelly, thank you for all your hard work.
And you did that all in a week, Kelly?
Um, a year.
Yeah, a lot of work. Good, well, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Yeah, I think it's, I think you're gonna get a lot more traffic to the site, and people finding out things they didn't even know were available with this ease of access.
And I think especially the plain text, that's, that's really big, like, I need big, I need large fonts, I need large type, and if we're looking at putting things in translation software, plain text is just such a game changer, because so much the formatting and a lot of HTML that's happening behind the scenes just confuses those systems.
Great.
Well, thank you, Kelly.
Thanks, Kelly, I appreciate it.
Okay, we will move on to Park's Culture and Recreation Comprehensive Plan. We have Jen Burbage, Parks Culture and Recreation Director. We have Jen Burbage, Parks Culture and Recreation Director. And is Han online? I guess he might spot in there. Is that him?
Hello, hello.
Okay, good. I'm just used to see your smiling face.
I'm mostly, mostly here for uh, support, but yeah.
All right, so we will pass that.
Well, thank you, um, yeah, and uh, thank you to the commission for reviewing the comprehensive plan update, this is probably the most important thing that our department will do as a part of the city's overall comprehensive plan. Uh, and so it's just really our guiding document and we, it's been, uh, speaking of processes that have taken a year and longer. Uh, we've been working on this for, for quite a while now, um, and excited to have this uh, be for you tonight. Um, this isn't an action item, it's informational briefing only, uh, uh, but happy to answer questions you have. Feel free to stop me if you have questions along the way. Um, I would ask for your patience, uh, look, looking at content. Um, strongly, we're still working on some of the photos, uh, we have a new updated format, that's one of the things we're really excited about. Um, it's, to this point, it's always been in a Word document, so we've got a new fancier looking, uh, more colorful, vibrant uh, formats, we're very excited about that, we're still working through some of the quirks and we're also waiting till the very end to do the table of contents. Because the page numbers are gonna change as we, um, you know, work with photos and whatnot, so. So thank you for your patience there. Um, before I launch into my slides, I do definitely want to thank Hans, um, and for all of his hard work on this plan, he's been there um, the whole way. And also to Ryan, thank you very much, uh, for your help and support and also Grant. So I really had a lot of support from the Community and Economic Development Department, but also other departments, um. Our GIS coordinator has been invaluable, Gary Montgomery over in the, um, you know, under the Finance Department, the IS section of that department and also, um, in our Public Works Department. Uh, that's where our Parks Maintenance Staff are housed. Uh, rather than under the Parks Department, so worked very closely with the Parks Maintenance Supervisor and um, their Capital Projects Team as well. Under Public Works, so also Public Affairs, it's really, you know, all departments have been involved and supportive, so. That, I will share my screen. Um, so as you mentioned, this is the twenty twenty-three comprehensive plan update for Parks Culture Recreation, um. I know, all of you know the why we do this, but for any public that are watching and just as a reminder, it's part of that bigger picture like I mentioned. Um, it gives us a chance to evaluate Parks Culture and Recreation Facilities and Services, set goals and policies, assess demand and need. Provide for public input to address needs and then um, continue eligibility for RCO grant opportunities. And that's the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office, and so they require anything um, that's applied for during this six-year period is actually in, uh, mentioned in this plan as a need, so. Uh, and we have had RCO grant, uh, been successful with RCO grants in the past and we, we have one for Gray Qyo Park coming up. Um, the, their board next week actually will be approving the project, so we're hopeful for a five hundred thousand dollar um, grant for that project. So that keeps us eligible, um, the team, um, obviously and most importantly is, is the public, uh, this is their park system. Um, city staff, as I mentioned, um, city boards, so thank you to you, uh, as a part of the team. And as mentioned in the staff report and it's listed in detail the meetings, but there's been a lot of advisory board activity. Um, pretty much monthly for the last year with the Parks Board, of course, taking the lead on the whole thing, but also, uh. The Commission on Equity has been invaluable, uh, the Historical Commission, the Youth Council, and of course yourselves. And then, of course, um, the City Council, uh, uh, obviously has input into what should be in this plan as well, they have, uh, we have connected their work plan to this plan. That's one of the really exciting things about this update is really connecting all the different plans and I'll get into that a little bit more. Um, it's important to mention the city's mission, this is really central to everything that we do here as uh, the city of Lacey, so our mission is to enrich the quality of life, um. Build attractive, inviting and secure community, um, council works in partnership to foster community pride, develop the economy, plan for the future, preserve and enhance our environment. And then the Parks Vision is also important to stay focused on, which is, we create exceptional events, experiences and environments that delight, educate and inspire the human spirit, connecting people to each other and the past and building a strong, healthy community. This is a vision that has been updated with this comprehensive plan update. Um, a few fun facts about Lacey that you probably all know as the planning commission, but good reminders, um. That Lacey Incorporated Boundary is, consists of the twelve thousand one hundred seventy-seven acres, which is nineteen square miles. And then the UGA is another ninety-one twenty-one acres, um, or fourteen point five square miles. So the total planning area for this comprehensive plan includes both. Because we know that people who are in the urban growth area use the city's parks and the city also has parks in the UGA. Um, so that's a total planning area of twenty-one thousand two hundred ninety-eight acres and a population of ninety-three thousand two hundred and eighteen as of twenty twenty-two. And then if we look at the overall Parks acreage, um, that Lacey has compared to the population. It's twelve hundred sixty-three acres to the ninety-three thousand two hundred and eighteen people. If you look at a national standard and, um, this is something that used to be used a lot more, it's not so much anymore. Um, as cities are unique and develop their own level of service. Um, it's a nice standard just to look at and see kind of where we, we could fall in, so the national standard is ten acres per thousand, um, and so we would hit the national standard with nine hundred and thirty-two acres. So you can see that we are, um, above the standard. We know that Lacey is surrounded by exceptional natural beauty and that we are the fastest growing city in the county and now the largest. And that equals a need for facilities and recreational and cultural opportunities for all the people. Um, just an overview of the department, um. There's over twelve hundred sixty-three acres of Parks Land, that includes the developed undeveloped open space and trail properties. Um, there's approximately fifteen family events that the staff produces in our department every year. And also annually over eleven hundred recreation and cultural uh, classes and programs that includes aquatics fitness, uh, museum programs. Trips and tours, et cetera, uh, we produce over thirty weeks of day camps every summer. And we're also, um, and that's not everything, that's just, these are just highlights. Very proud of the facilities that we bring to the community, um, for free use or for, you know, paid rental opportunities, there's a mixture of both. But the Rack is a state-of-the-art, um, sports complex. Uh, we, we also have a Lacey Museum, the Lacey Community Center and the Jacob Smith House, um, where.
Picture of the Rack.
Can gather, yep, that aerial shot is kind of nice. Uh, we also are very proud and you'll see in the document itself, there's a lot of um, narrative about our partnerships because together we can bring people more and cool things in Lacey, so. Some key partnerships is, uh, one with Senior Services for South Sound and they, we contract with them at the Virgil S. Clarkson Senior Center, which is at Woodland Creek Park next to the Community Center over there, um, really valuable partnership and they're turning fifty this month. Um, and then North Hurst Public Schools is another key partner, um, we have a joint use agreement for facilities. And again, those are not the only partnerships, we have a lot, but these are some of the highlights. Uh, when we talk about the benefits of Parks Culture Recreation, um, you'll see in the executive summary, there's a lot of information about these benefits. So inclusion of all people, uh, regardless of ability or race, um. You know, environmental resilience, we know that parks and trees cool. Um, cool the temperature and also create healthier, you know, um, soil. Uh, physical health is a big benefit, um, we know that health, healthcare costs are lower if people are fit and if they have opportunities and people are more likely to go exercise if there is a park or a space available to them that's free. Um, we know that parks and programs are so important for mental wellbeing and I think we were just reminded during the pandemic of this. This fact, um, we, you know, definitely provide access to play, um, and we create community. So we do, every July is Parks Recreation Month and so the theme from last year was we, we rise up for Parks and Recreation. Some of the challenges that are actually, it's those of you that read the last plan, you'll see that the challenges are the same as last time, keeping up with growth. Continuing to move from acquisition to development, um, or Parks Improvement Phase. And really what that means is, um, you know, Lacey's done such a great job of, of buying properties in key locations and now we need to focus on if there's funding available, which there isn't always. Is really use that funding to get people out onto the space and being able to access and, and use it. Um, Gray Qyo Park again is a great example of doing that. And then, of course, solidifying a future funding strategy, always working on that. Um, the strategic goals, we went from seven to five, so we just condensed them and, um, combined some of them and then added some wording from the, uh, Commission on Equity. So strategic goal number one says, develop a high-quality equitable diversified Parks Culture and Recreation System where physical, financial, social and cultural barriers are eliminated. Which includes unique facilities, events and recreation and cultural programs. This encourages social interaction, cultivates community spirit and strengthens the livability of Lacey in addition to reading community needs. Um, goal two is, and this is one that we combined, it was kind of separated out into two different strategic goals. Um, but it all went together as far as funding and partnerships, so prioritize um, Lacey Parks Projects and Facilities, identifying corresponding current and future funding sources, leverage investments and partnerships. And maintain Lacey's eligibility for grant funding. And then goal three, um, develop a trail system that interconnects parks, schools, neighborhoods, open spaces, other trail systems and important public facilities. Um, goal four is, uh, a lot of oversight is by the Historical Commission, so educate and engage the public with the heritage of Lacey and the South Sound Region through mission-driven programs and exhibits. And by preserving sites and artifacts of historical and cultural importance and making those accessible to the community. And goal five is, um, one that the Commission on Equity made edits to utilize sustainable systems and practices. That ensure the environmental, economic, social and cultural needs and desires of future generations will not be compromised. Uh, moving on to, uh, public outreach, um, we had a very robust, um. Public outreach starting in twenty twenty-one and, uh, there were three main, um, community outreach campaigns, if you will, uh, Lacey Cares, Energize Lacey, and then we had the Gray Qyo Park and Greenways Master Plan. Going on at the same time as the Lacey Cares Outreach, so we really have a lot of robust, uh, information from the public. And so with Lacey Cares, that was in twenty twenty-one, um, city actually hired a consultant to help us with Lacey Cares, that was J. Row and Co. Uh, Jason Robertson helped us with that, it was an open-ended survey which brought in, um, thirteen hundred participants. And a lot of information, so from that, um, he helped us harvest six thousand Parks Data Inputs. Uh, and then we took that information and compiled an outreach team made up of community members that helped us go out with these Parks Intercept surveys. And so we had two hundred participants and eight hundred inputs with that outreach. And then, um, we did a Parks Priority Survey and we had twelve hundred participants, so. You can see, this is actually way more interaction than the last plan, it's, it's really great how people, um, participated and I do think just with the online, people going online a lot more, um, you know, of course we had the in-person as well, but um, I just think that lends itself so well to having more participation, which is very exciting, cuz we want to hear from the community. Um, and then from this, we got the priorities, um, and then we did some targeted outreach. And then, of course, this is just alluding to the fact that this comp plan is updated with it. Um, and then syncing that up with any of the other Lacey Cares activities citywide that might happen in the future. Um, so. Uh, so that was in twenty twenty-one, then in twenty twenty-two, we did Energize Lacey, uh, which is what we called the campaign the last time we updated the comprehensive plan in twenty seventeen. And so basically, um, we told the public that you know, we had gone out to engage this, the community on what they would like the city to look, feel and function in the future. And then based on the input received, um, we wanted to help establish priorities and just take it one step further. So, and that we were going to be updating the comprehensive plan with this information, so we got, um. We actually ended up getting seven hundred and ten total responses with this one. And then, like I said before, the Gray Qyo Park Master Plan, um, was going on at the same time. And just kind of some data from that one. Uh, we had three, so this was not too long after COVID, so these were all virtual, we finally were able to have a hybrid one towards the end of the project meeting. But we had three open house, uh, virtual meetings, three hundred and forty people total with those. Um, and then what we would do is after each open house, we would do a survey. So that, hey, it's okay if you missed the open house, you can still provide your input. So we ended up with seven hundred eighty-one survey responses for that and we reached out to twenty stakeholder organizations. Um, but you can see, these are the top themes that, that came out of that outreach. Um, for the programming priorities and then guiding principles for the, for the parks. So, all that to say, some of the top things that you'll, top themes that you'll read in the plan is people want an indoor pool. The warmer temperature, uh, maybe, uh, some play features, lazy river type stuff, but don't forget about lap lanes. Uh, we have, we're very fortunate in Lacey, there is public pools with the school district. Um, they are, the temperatures and their schedule are meant for uh, swim teams and, um, PE. It's a school, it's for the kids and that's the first priority, it makes total sense, um, people are wanting access, more access like during the day to warmer temperature pools. Indoor recreation opportunities is a main theme, um, there's a lot of varying opinions on what could be indoors, it's, it's basically you know, it rains here nine months out of the year, so people want indoor opportunities. Um, indoor playground is a very popular, uh, idea. Trails and preservation of open space, um, really rose to the top, spray parks. Or splash pads, sometimes they're called, too. Um, year-round, multi-purpose synthetic turf sports fields, uh, and what we found was in talking to the sports user groups, uh, really focusing on the fields that are already planned, that the city already has space for. Not going out and buying property for more sports fields, but you know, for example, Meridian Park in northeast Lacey has designated space for sports fields, just hasn't been developed yet. Um, the Rack Phase Three is another example of space that can have, can house more fields. Um, affordable subsidized recreational opportunities, people are super happy with the events and classes that are happening, so that's nice to hear. Um, proposed updates for the plan and, uh, a lot of this is going to be similar to what's in your packet, um, in the staff report. But we updated the executive summary with, uh, robust additions regarding benefits. Um, we updated the strategic, strategic goals as I mentioned, updated the inventory. Updated the Lacey levels of service, we added in recreation, museum and cultural programs. Um, there, there really isn't a standard level of service. Uh, it's really dependent on unique communities and so we just speak to that in the level of service, uh, section. We included a map of not only the city parks, um, and facilities, but also non-city parks. Green space and habitat to show the full story of opportunities in Lacey. Um, we updated the public involvement input after robust outreach, as I already mentioned, uh, we updated the local history section. Um, we updated information in the parks planning areas, population, area boundaries, opportunities, needs and conditions, so there's ten. Uh, parks planning areas which aren't exactly the same as the planning, cities planning areas, but similar, sounds like. Um, we updated the implementation actions as it, it's now a Parks Capital Improvement Program or PCIP. There's a new format for that and. There's a new format for that, and the reason we made this change is so that can easily feed into the city's overall capital improvement plan, which is in the city's capital facilities plan. So that's a more streamlined streamlined system there. We added Lacey age and race demographics, the Commission on Equity really wanted to have that in there. Already mentioned updated design, key goals and policies, proposed changes, continuing to emphasize Lacey moving from acquisition to development, which I mentioned before. I mentioned continuing to establish sustainable funding strategy. This one, we're really happy about providing more accurate travel sheds, and we called them travel sheds instead of walk sheds to the parks on the level of service map. And so it's more of an actual point-five radius. So level of service is a neighborhood park within point-five mile radius of residents. But what we did last time is just kind of put a circle around the park, it's kind of as the crow flies. But we all know that there are bodies of water or private properties that sometimes you can't access within a point-five mile radius. So you'll see when you look at the maps, they're kind of funky, the shapes, but it's a more realistic look at what the point-five mile travel shed is. And we called it travel shed instead of walk shed because some people utilize, you know, other ways of traveling. So they might use a wheelchair or a walker. Perhaps they're on a skateboard. So travel shed seemed like the better word to use. We also, this is new, provided a map that indicates frequently traveled bus routes in proximity to the parks and facilities as a starting point to increase access. There were a lot of access conversations and we were able to, there was a request to show like city sidewalks from those bus stops. But the pedestrian and bicycle plan shows all of that, and so we're just connecting the two plans here, and I'll get to that in a minute. Conducting, so moving forward, we'd like to conduct parks and facilities assessments to help make recreational value assignments in the future, which will help guide future investments. So that's not something we did for this plan, but it's in the the goals and policies section to work on moving forward. And then we incorporated the Lacey Museum Strategic Plan components, which were very, Historical Commission was excited about that one. We were able to incorporate diversity, equity and inclusion draft strategic plan components. So the Commission on Equity is working on this plan, and it's not quite finished yet, so that's why it's called the draft plan. Moving forward, they're going to work with us to help determine the metrics together, which, determine which metrics together to help with future decisions. And then, as I mentioned, we referenced and connected the city's pedestrian and bicycle plan, which wasn't done on this last plan update, because it was done in twenty eighteen, and this last plan was in twenty seventeen. And then this one, this one is in here, consider coordination with the land use element of the city's comprehensive plan to ensure parks and their associated master plans are compatible with adjacent zoning. And I worked with Ryan on this one, and we, this kind of opens the door in case that there is a policy change that is needed or decided on once the city's comprehensive plan is underway. And it sounds like, from what Grant and Ryan have both said, there's going to be a lot of collaboration with with other departments and boards. And so, so we did add this in as something to consider. Well, you all know the timeline because you're familiar with comprehensive plans, but we made it through the city staff, city staff and public input by the end of May. We're hoping to get it through all advisory boards by the end of July. I'll be here next July eighteenth with this plan. And then City Council, August or September, it's it's up to your all's schedule for comprehensive plan, so.
I was just gonna mention, so obviously Joe mentioned the July eighteenth public hearing, but the two elements of our comprehensive plan updates for twenty twenty-three, one will obviously be the parks plan, but the second will be the the private amendment for the Gwynwood Retreat Center. So those would be packaged together as the suite of conference plan amendments for twenty twenty-three and move forward to the council. I think we're, we're by the end of August, I think, is the the date on that, so.
It's the July theme for the parks. Last year's.
Oh, right, we rise up. Right, I need to look that up. I don't have it at my fingertips. I know it's already June twentieth. It's time to celebrate.
That's right.
I'll have to let you know on that one, because I'll be back in July. So, okay, there you go.
When you get feedback from the public and the top couple of things are an indoor pool or or, you know, a multi-sport facility, that kind of thing. How does that fit into planning? Or where where do you, how do you push that into the into the system?
Yeah, so so there's the Parks Capital Improvement Program that I mentioned, and so it's in a spreadsheet form in the document. And so basically, those top themes are incorporated into that. But, you know, funding is not solidified for something like that. So it's just, it's listed as to be determined. But it's incorporated so that it has a placeholder.
The discussion begins.
Yeah, actually.
Starts talking about it.
Yeah, and there's already been a discussion, you may have, you may have heard about the Young Child and Family Center that the council has been being updated on as well. The Northerson Public Schools took the lead on looking into Young Child and Family Center at the old Bucknell or Nisqually site, so they own that piece of property on Marvin Road. It's a fifteen-acre site, and they're really wanting to focus, there's a huge deficit for early learning. So they're really wanting to focus on filling the needs for those students. And then also looking at how kids learn inside and outside the classroom. And so they're wanting to do not only the educational like classrooms at that site, but also partnering with the YMCA to do a pool facility on that site. And potentially, there's there's space, enough space for like a spray park at that site, too. And there's potential for an indoor playground, too. So that, that's a potential opportunity, right? And they've already started looking at a funding plan for that. So that's an example. But yeah, the conversations, and that's, that's what the, you know, when we worked through the public outreach process with J. Row and Co., we got insights and recommendations, and really, a lot of the recommendations are start the conversations of, you know, who could come to the table with these different things that the public really wants and needs.
Yeah, there's some big items on that wish list, you know, and it'd be kind of a dream sheet, but it's fun to see how it can start and germinate and eventually come about.
For sure. So lower of the synthetic fields, is it just to be more usable during inclement weather?
Inclimate weather, and then if you, if you add lights, then you can, there's just more use usage time. So in trying to fit all the practices out there, there's a longer period of time.
From the injuries sometimes on those fields, it's sometimes more dangerous.
Um, not in my experience.
Having a baseball player, it would be great to have more turf fields in this town. Artificial turf runs, yeah.
Yeah, and the maintenance costs are lower, too.
Of surfacing, just more expensive to put in, obviously.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much. We're gonna see on the eighteen.
Yep, we'll see on the eighteen. Okay, thank you. I'm gonna feel off.
I'm not expecting too much in terms of public, you know, oftentimes you ask what, what do you expect for the public turnout, it'd probably be pretty low, so just, you know, this is fairly straightforward. The dog park people or the, you know, frisbee golf folks will be, this golf folks will be coming out, out of the woodwork, I don't know. It can happen, so.
You never know.
Never know, but yeah.
Have a good night, thank you.
You're now gonna move on to the update on the legislative session, Sarah.
Thank you. If you get my screen up here.
Patiently for your turn.
Yeah. I won't take as long either. There's a lot, you know, of legislation this year for you guys to be interested in and aware of, but I still won't take as long as parks planning. So I'm Sarah Shelling, I think I've met most of you all before. And I'm just here tonight to give you a brief summary of some of the legislation that was passed in this last twenty twenty-three session that most of these things you'll be interested or introduced to through some of your work in the next coming year or so, both with your comp planning, the comp plan update that's coming up, as well as your annual work plan items like the development guidelines. There will be some things that'll need to be touched in that arena as well. So from a land use planning perspective, there were three kind of focuses for the legislation in this past session. First, and that we'll talk about first, increased affordability and availability of housing. The second, reducing permitting barriers for development, which also is said to increase affordability and availability of housing. And then climate change, sustainability and resiliency, which is going to be a focus as part of your comp planning update process. First, we're gonna talk about the housing affordability and availability. And so we'll talk first about House Bill eleven-ten, and I'm sure you've all heard this bill referred to as the middle housing bill and are probably all aware of it. And so the intent of this bill is really to create opportunities for impil construction to accommodate middle housing. And so what we are looking at for the city of Lacey is a minimum of two units per lot must be permitted in residential zones and four units per lot if one of those units is affordable to qualify as affordable. To be able to take advantage of that four units per lot. Development, you have to have a minimum fifty-year covenant on the property to make sure that unit stays affordable. And that's going to be tied to area median income, eighty percent of area median income as affordable for the next fifty years. It varies all throughout the city. So in the low-density residential zone, I believe it's five thousand square feet.
It's forty-five hundred.
Forty-five hundred square feet with an alley. And so what this bill doesn't talk about is minimum lot sizes, really. The only place they really talk about minimum lot sizes is in regards to parking requirements, actually. But, and then in, we'll talk in just a minute about the ADU requirements, which says if you have a lot under two thousand square feet, or maybe it's in this one, you don't have to have more, you don't have to require more than two units. So on a two thousand square foot lot, you can get away with just two units.
I was just gonna point out, too, to the Plan Commission that, so we currently allow up to three units per lot. So, so this is saying a minimum of two. We already allow three. What we don't have is the provision regarding the up to four units if one is affordable.
Right.
So we'll need to make some code adjustments.
Yes. So we do have a good head start with the low-density zone consolidation, the Plan Commission worked on last year, right? But we will have to address how we review middle housing in terms of land use review. I think over two units, there's requirements for what's called site plan review, which is an additional review to make sure that housing is compatible with existing single-family residential. With the new law, you're not allowed to treat middle housing any different than a single-family residential structure. So you're not worrying about compatibility with landscape buffers and things like that for higher intensity of these low-density zones. So what we're really talking about for land use review is design review and a single-family building or building permits, much like a single-family residents would go through. We'll also have to look at our parking requirements. This does change parking restrictions, lots under six thousand square feet. You can require no more than two spaces per unit on the residential lot, which when we're talking about, I guess duplexes require two spaces per unit. But over six thousand square feet, or let's see, two spaces per residential lot, let's see, over two thousand square feet, under six, I'm sorry, six thousand square feet. Under six thousand square feet is one residential unit or one parking space per residential unit. Sorry about that. So there will be some changes to our low-density code section, our parking chapters related to middle housing. These are all, can all be done in conjunction with the comp plan. It goes into effect six months after the adoption of the next comp plan. So we'd have to address those middle housing issues with the comp plan and then subsequent development regulations, okay?
Do we have any concerns about being able to accommodate the extra demand for water and sewer with this concentrated living?
If we can't, I, we are still able to, as long as we can provide water and sewer, then we're required to do it. There is comment, there's statements in the law that says availability of things like water and sewer can preclude development of, you still have to be able to provide those services. I don't know that we've necessarily looked at what that looks like at this point yet.
It just, without being, you know, an engineer, it just seems like there'd be more pressure on the system if you had four families occupying the same real estate as one family today.
Yeah.
When we did the low, low-density zone consolidation, we did reach out to our Water Resources Engineering Department, said, you know, look, majority of these would be going in kind of older neighborhoods, established neighborhoods with larger lot sizes. Can you kind of give us a thirty thousand foot level look at what, you know, what the the demand would be and what the infrastructure, you know, requirements would be? And the answer we got back is that our infrastructure generally is sized to be able to handle the additional demand. So there, there did, there, there probably are some areas of the city that would be undersized, but generally, we have adequately served, you know, water lines and sewer lines in our existing older neighborhoods that could handle additional. Yeah, and and two, you know, we would need to look at if there was additional demands, you know, to the point of needing to be upgraded. You know, what is that, what does that look like? At this point, you know, it's hard to imagine because, you know, even with the, the, you know, allowing a duplex or a triplex on a lot, I don't think we've gotten many permit applications for.
No.
So at this point, the limiting factor isn't really the utilities, it's more the, you know, the demand for, you know, tearing down an old house that, you know, is no longer viable and replacing it with a duplex or a triplex, which those, you know, housing prices right now are so high that the existing house that's there is usually not worth tearing down. And so the, you know, it's more about the financial feasibility of the project than it is the utility limitations associated with it.
The other thing, too, that will restrict it is CCNRs of some of the older, of some of the neighborhoods. If you live in a neighborhood with CCR, CCNRs, they may still say one unit per lot, one residential, and that is going to restrict development of some of these things, including ADUs, which we'll talk about next.
What percentage of Lacey are HOA communities? Would you say, I know there was some rule, right, in the nineties, anything built after the nineties? What is our percentage, if you know?
I don't know off the top of my head. We've done mapping, I can provide some maps that show you kind of where our older neighborhoods are that are on city water, on city sewer and have larger lot sizes. We, we did that as part of our analysis. We didn't look at specifically, because we would have to go and pull covenants for every single property, and we just don't have the resources to be able to do that. So when we did the low-density zone consolidation, we did mapping that showed essentially kind of like the original city limits of Lacey. So if you can think of basically from, from City Hall where we're at now, south to about Thirty-seventh Avenue on College or Thirty-seventh on on Ruddle, that, you know, that kind of area is kind of the oldest part.
Pre-HOA.
Yeah, you know, that, that, those were all incorporated back in like the sixties, so you know, those are going to be mostly the the lots that would be without a, without covenants that this would apply to.
Any new development can't have covenants that would restrict the provision or the addition, but any new development is also going to be far more dense than anything that would accommodate this.
Was the footprint of the house, are any structures still gonna be constructed to fifty percent of the lot size?
I think so. You know, it doesn't, the legislation doesn't talk about changes to our lot area coverages, and so that's going to restrict it as well. So we'll move on to accessory dwelling units, and this, again, much like eleven-ten, it was designed to get more housing onto more lots with fewer regulatory restrictions. So, and this will change, we will have to look at our ADU regulations to accommodate the requirements of this bill. Right now, the city regulates in, through our design guidelines chapter, and we permit ADUs up to eight hundred and fifty square feet in size or half the size of the main unit, whichever is less. And they're restricted to one ADU per single-family lot. So a single-family house can have one ADU. This bill changes that a lot. It requires that cities permit at least two ADUs per lot with a maximum, without restricting the maximum. allowance of at least 1,000 square feet in size. So our ADUs are going to get bigger and you can have two. And one can be distinct and separate from the house and the other one can be incorporated into the house. If you want to do it that way, you can have one, turn an accessory building that doesn't meet, you know, any zoning standards into an ADU without restriction, except for coming up to building codes for residents. So it's really about getting ADUs, small little apartments onto lots wherever possible. What else does it do? It also talks a little bit about changing the parking requirements. It's, I think, one parking space per unit, which is the same as what we do now as well. This also goes into effect six months after the next periodic update. So it'll be combined with the next comp plan update.
I didn't quite understand that when you were saying like the changes. Does that mean that like someone could get a prefab or also just put it in there and say, this is my ADU?
You know, they can really do that now. As long as it meets design requirements. And there's probably going to have to be some changes to those design requirements as well with this. But if it's 1,000 square feet and it's, I don't believe you'd be able to move in a, like a recreational vehicle and call that your ADU. It's got to be, it's got to be a structure. It could be a manufactured home because those are treated the same as, you know, single-family homes as well.
As the foundation.
Yep, yep. And you can have a couple of them. And I, yeah, you can have a couple.
Is the idea behind this rule that complete strangers would live there and be tenants to the homeowner?
Potentially, but there's also a part of the bill that says there cannot be requirements that the main unit is owner occupied. So they could all be rentals. You could also, it also would allow an ADU on a lot with a duplex with any type of middle housing. So you could have conceivably a duplex with an ADU in the back or a triplex with an ADU in the back.
We're going to need those public parks everybody to go to.
All for sure.
Homes are going to be housed.
The next one about housing, it's 1042. And this is the use of existing buildings. And what this does is it says that cities have to allow existing buildings in commercial and mixed-use zones. Cities must permit them to be used as housing, converted to housing without transportation analysis or environmental policy analysis requirements. So it essentially allows any commercial building to be converted to residential without additional requirements by the city to accommodate parking, landscaping, building design, even if the building is non-conforming to current codes. So what this might look like is if one of the office, old office buildings in Woodland Square Loop, if the developer came in and wanted to convert that to housing, they'd be able to do that without necessarily having to meet the current standards of the Form 8 code. Or if they put, or meet the parking requirements of, say, a, an apartment complex. Did you see existing infrastructure already on the site?
What's the viability of that? Is that economical to do that? Is it?
Generally with office buildings, so, so that wouldn't really, you know, create a hardship for anybody moving in. But it's just like, how do you convert cubicles to houses?
On the building. And especially those, you know, we, we've looked into the viability of the, of converting buildings on Woodland Square. And a lot of those, you know, for residential, they want, they want to be around the perimeter of the building where there's windows, right? It's really hard with those that have large floor plates that are mostly cubicles and internal focused to be converted. So I, I think it's a well-meaning bill, but it may not apply to, you know, or there may be logistical issues associated with the buildings that this would apply to, to be easily converted.
What about like safety codes? Like you have to have windows and kinds of.
All those things still.
So that would be, so that would be a huge restriction for like a, a large. You know, that's fine if it's all cubicles and the windows and stairwells are connected. But if you're providing that up into private units.
What this is really getting at is those kind of land use more kind of restrictions that prohibit building conversion or limit building conversion. So building codes, you know, building safety, fire safety, you know, those.
Those are still going to be in play.
Yeah.
And then I wanted to touch briefly on the 5258, which is the condominium and townhouse bill. And this doesn't have a lot of, you're not going to see a lot of stuff coming through about Bill 5258. But what it does, the intent of this bill was to encourage condominium development and townhouse development with recognition that condos and townhouses have historically been a first step into homeownership. And over the last several years, we haven't seen it. We've seen condo development drop off substantially. And the biggest reasons they aren't being constructed is because of liability laws associated with the construction and construction defect, defect claims and insurance liabilities specifically. And so what this law seeks to do is reduce the impact of those claims by providing a different process where the builder has an opportunity to review claims of construction defects, respond to them and correct them prior to the claimant moving forward directly into litigation. And it's the litigation that can tie things up for years and years because that can restrict their ability to continue on with a project or to move on to other projects. And it also impacts their insurance ability to get insurance for their projects as well. So this puts in place a new process that would allow them to move through that construction defect claim more quickly so that they can continue building and reduce their insurance liability. What it also does, it provides a down payment assistance program for first-time homebuyers through the Washington State Housing Finance Commission. And then it also, the one impact it will have for the city is on impact fee schedules. And it's designed to reflect smaller units. And so that condominium units on a per-unit basis, they pay less impact fees than like a single, and they do already to some degree. But we'd have to analyze the proportionate impact and have that assessed on the permits rather than the way we may do it now. So obviously, the effect of that would be to reduce overall impact fees, reducing building permit fees, potentially reducing the cost. And that one, sorry.
That picture, is, is that from a?
Yep, this picture, oh wait, sorry. How do I go back now? This is a picture of, it's either Campus Reserve or Campus Springs. Could go in either one of those, but this is an existing condo development that's under construction right now in Lacey, up in the Meridian campus area. I think there's 43 and 38 on either side of Old Land Drive up there that are currently under construction.
Is that actually a picture or is that like?
It's a, it's an artist rendering. What the building's going to look like, yeah. But there, I think there's five, yeah, there, it's a three-story townhouses. But there's a garage on the backside of it that I don't have a picture of, but it's five and six complexes, Upper Meridian Campus.
So these are our first condos, I think, since maybe Horizon Point?
Probably Horizon Point.
So that's probably been a good 10, 15 years.
Amazing.
So finally getting some condo development, not necessarily as a result of this legislation, this legislation. So hopefully, you know, and we've talked a lot, and the Plan Commission's talked a lot about how to get homebuyer, you know, first-time homeownership opportunities and condos being a really important way to do that. Maybe this will help, you know, with some of the barriers to condo development. But we are seeing some being constructed, which is good news.
It opens up more inventory, but older folks want to move into condos too, which opens up homes for sale.
I only wish that they were putting elevators in those.
Yeah.
Because I think that would level the opportunities for seniors. I mean, that's in my neighborhood. I'm in Meridian Campus. And when we were seeing the plans come in, I thought, well, sure, first timers or empty nesters, but they're not putting elevators.
And these are three-story, right, units, yeah.
And it's so inexpensive nowadays to put those residential elevators in.
Oh, for sure.
You can make them really small and not take up a lot of space. And they're, I don't know, we saw it done in Tennessee very, very well. Because Tennessee, you had to build into a lot of elevation changes. So they were building homes like that. And they were just putting these residential elevators in them and they worked fine. And it just helped people who weren't going to climb three sets of stairs every day.
Well, hopefully this will encourage, I mean, one of the reasons why they had to do condos here was because the provision in our zoning district required that they set this aside as multifamily. And they wanted to build these as a single-family. They wanted to, that's probably why they're designed as three-story townhouses, townhouses, because they wanted to build them as single-family.
Do you guys have the same restrictions of like if there's so many per lot that the one unit has to be affordable housing? Or are these like, is there a limit?
Yeah, yeah, they won't, yeah.
Their HOA fees are going to be kind of high too.
I've seen, probably because of the common open space on their own. More than our single families.
Not really affordable house. It's just high-class, really good.
Yeah.
But you're not really optimistic on that, House Bill having much influence on more condos coming, it doesn't.
I mean, I think it, I don't know if, I don't know how much it's going to change the liability. I think if it can substantially change the liability impacts and if it shows that in the first few years, I'm hopeful that it could. Because that really, I think, is the barrier.
Did that bill allow for apartment conversion into condominiums? Or is that something that would have to be constructed differently?
But I think that, I don't think that there's restrictions on conversions to condos. Like that would probably be a more local zoning restriction. And I, we don't have a restriction in our zoning code that would prohibit conversion of, because condos are still considered multifamily. So it's not turning it from multifamily into single-family. But there is legislation in some of the bills I've already talked about, and I can't remember which one. I think it's the, well, it's got to be the middle and then the ADU as well that says those units, that ADU could be converted to a condominium in the future as well. So, which is interesting because we've never done that really before. Whoops, didn't talk about that one yet. And so this one talks about, 5290 talks about permit review timelines. So it's an effort to give builders some consistency and assurance that their land use permits are going to be reviewed in a timely fashion. This doesn't change really our, it a little bit adjusts our permit timelines that we have in our development guidelines. This one is effective January 1st, 2025, so it'll probably need to be in next year's development guideline update. Just to address 20 business days for determination of completeness, 45 days for permits that don't require public notice, 70 days for permits that do require public notice, and 120 days for permits that require public notice in a public hearing. I think these go fairly well with the timelines we currently hold. The one big difference is that now if we don't meet those timelines in land use review, then we're subject to some penalties, which is refund of permit application fees. But we'll have to adjust the development guidelines during the next round to address those timelines. We don't often exceed those timelines, just.
They're giving a year and a half to get that.
Yeah, well, for public hearing, projects with public hearings and public notice, those do take longer because in Lacey especially, you have to go to the hearings examiner. And there's some statutory timelines for notice, notice of application, notice of hearing, posting of all those notices, and then getting to the hearings examiner, he has so many days. And then in Lacey, because our council is still involved in our quasi-judicial process, they have to go to city council as well. And so an easy project can take three months and harder projects that requires a lot more extensive review, maybe a conditional use permit like the washcloth facility or the mental health facility with wetlands as well. Those can take four to six months per review.
I know that's on Aaron's radar. Your new position. I'm reading all this going, ooh.
This doesn't, this doesn't address building permits. And I think in a lot of cases, building permits are really the thing that are the problem. And this doesn't address building permits, but it may address civil review. And so that can be a challenge for our Public Works Department as well. Well, let's see, next, whoops. Here we are.
Need to go back to share, I think. I don't know if you're not sharing or not.
It's on the far right, share at the top, far right.
Sorry, I don't know what happened.
Far, far right, upper share. See in your orange?
Oh, here?
Yeah.
Okay, no.
No?
No.
It's in zoom.
There we go. That's all right. Whoops. Okay. So 5412.
I have to say, Sarah, you were doing so well.
I know. 5412 is a bill that's also aimed at reducing permitting workloads. What this does is it expands the SEPA infill development categorical exemptions. And I don't know how familiar you guys are with SEPA. SEPA is the State Environmental Policy Act. And with each land use application that's submitted, unless it's exempt from SEPA review, a SEPA checklist, which I now analyzes the project's impact on various elements of the environment is submitted with their application. SEPA was, what year did, 1970-something SEPA started? And SEPA started and reviews began prior to most cities' adoptions of their critical areas ordinances, their other environmental regulations. So it allowed governments to say, you have to do these things to protect the environment if you're going to develop. Once we adopted GMA and started adopting all our critical areas ordinances, our ordinances take care of most of the environmental issues that a SEPA checklist would address. Right now, our SEPA thresholds or categorical exemptions for housing say you don't have to submit a checklist for short plats. So single-family developments under 10 lots or multifamily developments up to 60 units, you are exempt from submitting that application. What this will do is say, if you're building housing, you don't have to submit the SEPA checklist. And it's okay because our development regulations and critical areas ordinances apply anything, really address anything that SEPA would have previously addressed. SEPA is kind of like, adds on to the back of a development regulation. And what we use SEPA for at the city of Lacey is to collect impact fees related to traffic impacts for Thurston County and the city of Olympia. So if the city of Olympia and Thurston County want to continue to collect impact fees for developments in our city, what we'd have to do is develop an impact fee ordinance, which is what we now do for school impact fees as well. What I think this bill says is you don't, you no longer have to, it, it's supposed to, I think, take some timeline out of your permit review. It doesn't really affect the city of Lacey because SEPA review is combined with land use review. It's not a separate process. And in a lot of jurisdictions, it's still a separate process. So this takes out that process for developers of housing and that delay. I don't know how I did there, Grant. How did I do there? Whoops. Must be okay. So the next one is related to, this is going to be probably the biggest thing with the comp plan update, the biggest changes for your comp plan update, 1181. It's related to climate change and resiliency. And so this amended or provided revisions to RCW 3678, which is the Growth Management Act. And it amends some of the goals to specifically address climate change and resiliency. The transportation goal in the comp or in RC, in 3678 has been revised to say you have to address greenhouse gas emissions and vehicles my own traveled in your comp plan. Open space and recreation goals have to strive to retain green space and fish and wildlife habitat. And then the citizen participation goals are revised to encourage participation of vulnerable populations. There's also a new goal that's been added to deal with climate change and sustainability. And so that goal says, comp plans, development regulations and regional plans must support greenhouse gas emissions reduction goals and foster resiliency, climate impacts and natural hazards mitigation. So in addition to addressing those goals, it also adds two new elements or a new element to the comp plan with two sub-elements. And the elements, the climate change element and resiliency, which also add, or climate change element, which has two sub-elements. Let's see, greenhouse gas emissions and resiliency. And resiliency is essentially the natural hazards mitigation plan. And those will be, Commerce is putting out some guidance for jurisdictions. Some preliminary guidance is supposed to come out in December 2023 for jurisdictions with comp plans due in 2025, which would be us. So we'll get that guidance to help inform that process. Um, so we'll get that um guidance um to help inform that um process. Uh, let's see, and finally, whoops, I keep doing that. Um, a few other things of interest, um, I didn't put a lot of information. The Shoreline Management Act, um, this just addresses the timeline for updates of the Shoreline Management Act. It went from eight years to ten years, so our next shoreline master plan update won't be until twenty thirty. Um, fourteen twenty-five talks about municipal annexations, and it removes the cap, the population cap, and says anybody who want, any city that wants to annex can impose a sales and use tax above other authorized taxes um that can be used by the jurisdiction to provide, maintain, and operate municipal services.
I was curious about something, is, is it the soup or the salad? What does current call that weird space?
The meatloaf.
So if like a city wants to, like, do they get to decide, oh, I wanna be part of Lacey or I wanna be part of Olympia? Or is that already kind of mapped out, like, what potentially gets annexed by home?
So our urban areas in the urban growth area for Lacey would be annexed by Lacey. Olympia's gonna have its own urban growth area that they would be responsible for those annexations. And then there's lots of different processes that.
Yeah, so we have designated urban growth area, like, you know, in, in Lacey, we have ours and Olympia has theirs. Um, Olympia legally cannot annex property that's in the Lacey urban growth area without first amending the urban growth area to have that area put into the Olympia U G A. So, so if you're in the Lacey U G A, you can as, you know, assume with, you know, a lot of cer- certainty that if you were annexed, you'd be annexed to the Lacey.
Just sure, don't come to Lacey.
And this um bill is in, is intended to encourage annexation by allowing the jurisdiction to impose a tax to pay for some of those services. Cause Ryan will probably tell you in his next annexation presentation that annexation is not cheap and often um very expensive for cities to, to take on, so.
And just to clarify, it was the Growth Management Hearings Board that called it the leftover meatloaf, not.
Um, and then finally, um, I think you probably heard about this, your last um meeting with Gordon and Jennifer about the Manufactured Home Landlord Tenet Act. It just gives um a little bit um of um assurance to tenants. It provides some additional protections to tenants of manufactured home parks who own their home but not the land. Gives them some rights to um write a first refusal um if the landlord wants to sell or the property owner wants to sell. Um, so those, that wraps up most of the bills of interest, I think, for you guys. Um, this is just some of the things that we may have to look at um moving forward. Um, just, I could have probably put all of the zoning code up there, because there may be some changes to, there's probably much changes to many more of the chapters of the L M C that we'll be looking at as we move forward with the comp plan amendment in light of these um changes to the, from the legislature. That is what I have for you this evening. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
I was just gonna mention one thing, which was um, this is a somewhat unique legislative session. And probably, Dave, the reason you've heard this multiple times is that um the, the legislature has really taken essentially a, a top-down approach to planning. Um, in years past, throughout, basically throughout my career, I've been, you know, doing this since the Growth Man- Management Act came around, is that, you know, they provided the framework through, you know, the state laws, but the, the cities and the local jurisdictions kind of had a lot of, they said the framework, but we have a lot of options to kind of address things like affordable housing and environmental protection and, and transportation and all those kinds of things. What the state legislature basically said out of this legislative session is, hey, we think there's some things that are so important that this is exactly what we want you to do. This is exactly what we want you to do related to housing and the A D Us and, you know, CIPA exemptions and all those kinds of things. So it's, it's a, a unique session in that it's given us a lot of um requirements out of this that are like, you must do this, and there's really no other option to do it, which is, I, I'll say, fairly unique in my career. I don't think I've seen quite as much legislative, you know, action, you know, on some of these high priority items like, likes come out in this session.
But bottom line kind of though is whether they come top-down or come from the city, a lot of this is financially motivated, whether, like you're talking about, whether people are gonna tear down a home and.
Right.
Do anything, so if, we haven't seen a lot of, we're not sure how much difference it'll make for a short term uh for availability of homes or, and things like that.
Yeah, and you know, and there's other things like Sarah talked about, some of the permitting timelines and some of those kinds of things, which we already do a fantastic job in Lacey of, of, you know, already meeting those timelines. And so really, that's not an issue for us. Um, so there, you know, in, in addition to some of the regulation changes on the, you know, what affects the land, there's other things behind the scenes like, you know, CIPA exemptions and the timelines and those kinds of things that really aren't a barrier right now anyways. And so really, that's not gonna affect us much, but we will have to go in and amend our codes to make sure that we're consistent with that. So we'll have to do the work to be able to do that. But, yeah, it's not gonna make an immediate impact to, you know, change. All of a sudden, people aren't gonna be out there building houses that.
Gosh, a few years ago, um, I, we had a couple developers who would buy, bought some of the larger lots kind of in central Lacey, and man, they would have loved this A D U and the um, the duplex legislation, because they did just about whatever they could to have created so many houses on those lots. They would love this, and now they could have done it much more, much, much more easily than they did.
Oh, yeah, so none of this will need to be reviewed by us or city council, because it's.
It's still.
It still will?
Yeah, so we'll still need to go the, through the regulation changes um to make sure that we're consistent with what the bills, you know, and the, the state law requires. Um, some of the, some of the things we'll be able to actually get a little bit of a jumpstart on. Uh, I don't think we'll necessarily have to wait, most of it, it goes into effect when we update our comprehensive plan. Um, but some of this is, you know, fairly low-hanging fruit that we'll be able to take action on relatively quickly. So I'd imagine probably by, by the end of this year, we'll start seeing some of those things come forward that we can start taking some immediate action on and not have to necessarily wait for our, our comp plan update to, to get some of these things done.
If you do it, and you have the resources or other kinds of things, okay.
Right, right.
And I, I just echo that, that, and the reason behind that is, uh, of all the good work that we've, that you all and Rick and Jerry Lit and the staff have done in the past, um, we're really ahead of the curve on many, many, many of these things. And we're just tweaking, whereas a lot of jurisdictions are gonna be scrambling to try to figure it out.
Okay, any other questions for Sarah? Pretty whole business, there is none.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Communications and announcements, remind everybody this, this Thursday, right, Brian? A joint, joint council, uh, Lacey City Council, Thurston County, County Commissioner. Meeting at six P M in the atrium building, that's on Pacific Avenue.
And that's also gonna be Zoom and on YouTube, so when we get that Zoom link, we'll send it out to the entire panel.
All right.
It's right for intercity transit, isn't it?
Yeah. Uh, reminder, July fourth is coming, which is uh our usual meeting, we will not be meeting that time. Our next meeting will be July eighteen. And we are adjourned.
Thank you all.